Call the April 2022 USD 350 Board of Education meeting. The order, welcome visitors. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
I have nothing.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Sorry. It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Consent agenda.
I have nothing unusual to report on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I read the board for the consent agenda is presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Patron comments.
Well, we have Mrs. Clark here with the group of students. They're going to share with you about Tiger Coffee Shop. So Hannah and Tara and William and Allison, you're up. We do have the executive summary, the business summary on your machine there. Actually, they're giving you a copy.
Tiger Coffee offers hot lattes, iced and blended coffees available plain or made to order with caramel, vanilla, and mocha flavors. Our coffees are brewed from fresh espresso beans. They're located in the St. John Hudson High School and operate as a school-based business. The cups and lids are environmental friendly and made from 100% compostable materials. Sugar-free syrup slash flavorings are used to meet nutritional recommendations and healthy guidelines for students. Students in baking and pastries and nutritional wellness serve as baristas during first hour, LS, third hour, and seventh hour. The students in Tiger Coffee use an iPad with a square app to process transactions. The app keeps track of all the sales and generates a report that shows total sales, times of sales, and ranks the sales with the most ordered item of that day. Sales tax is included in the selling price. The snack food industry is expected to grow through 2026 due to the launch of new flavors and healthier choices. The profit margin for the snack food industry is expected to rise from 13.4% to 15.8%. I am the business manager. I have been taking business essentials classes, facts, and also algebra one to help me figure out expenses. I have also had Ms. Clark, business teacher, help out with financials. All of us have experience with customer service because we have all worked concessions at school sports games. We all took employee skills and trade surveys to find out which each of our strengths were and put those skills and traits into play when deciding who works on what. A sensory scientist helped Tiger Coffee develop a survey to gather feedback from students and school staff to determine products and pricing prior to opening Tiger Coffee. The sensory scientist helped prepare a nine-point liking skill taste testing survey questions to gather feedback prior to determining products and pricing. In addition, just about right questions were asked, were also asked to determine flavors and lessons. Here are a few of our survey questions. Here's a picture of William and Tara tasting. Tiger Coffee will advertise with flyers, paper menus, business cards, and even social media. New flyers will come out at the beginning of each week with new information on drinks. Business cards will be delivered in person. Paper menus have a QR code on them to open a virtual menu. Instagram and Facebook will be our basis for social media marketing. We will be making two to three new social media posts each week about updates and social updates. A virtual menu may be found on the Tiger Coffee website. Sugar-free syrup slash flavorings and 1% milk are used to meet nutritional recommendations and healthy guidelines for students. Tiger Coffee have been taste tested and are student-approved. Here are some of the recipes the baristas have made up. Our competitors are White's Food Mart and St. John Short Stop, and we compare our prices with theirs. The total cost for one unit for both lattes and iced coffees is $1.09 and the selling price is $2.05 and the sales tax is included and the profit is $1.21. The total cost of one unit of blended coffee is $1.21 and the selling price is $3.00 and sales tax is included and profit is $1.85. $1,002.80 is the startup cost for equipment and supplies. Our break-even point is 24 days and this is the point that profits would pay for the startup cost. We estimated that we would sell 32 drinks per day as that is how many we sold on the first day Tiger Coffee opened. This is our break-even analysis in details. Tiger Coffee is an SBE, school-based enterprise. Students receive course credit and real-world experience. Overhead expenses are reduced. The first year, we estimated that we would sell 32 drinks per day. We estimated a 10% sales increase for years two and three.
So how's it been going so far?
Pretty good.
Have you been hitting the 32 drinks today?
Yes, we've been hitting more than that.
Good, yeah. Mostly teachers?
Uh, no, there's quite a few students. Most of our sales are based on...
What's your favorite drink overall?
My favorite?
Or no, the most popular, I should say.
Most popular is the, probably the frappe's, the blended ones. It's probably caramel.
So you guys participated in the youth entrepreneurship competition?
Yes.
And won that?
And now what?
And now?
And now we're going to state in Manhattan.
Awesome. When is that?
The 28th.
Okay.
Good luck.
Good job.
Really proud of these girls for the courage it's taken to prepare a stand-up presentation like this and our teachers for working together. Mrs. Clark is involved in it. Mrs. Patterson's involved in it. Mrs. Mixon is involved in it. Who else?
That's a good one.
I'd love to be a part of the teachers, but truly been a group effort. Thank you, girls, for coming in today. Really appreciate you showing off some of the cool stuff we're doing.
Mrs. Patterson would like to extend an invite if you can come in. And can you tell them again Hannah, when they're, when you're open? And you're welcome to come in and she left you a menu at your convenience when they're open during the school day.
We're open during first hour, LS, third hour, and seventh hour.
Eight o'clock, nine forty, eight to nine, or eight, eight fifty, nine forty-five till 11, essentially, and then the 2:30 to 3:00.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you. Good job.
Calendar adjustment.
So the first business item here is the adjustment of the calendar. We sent out word in January, I think it was, to parents about the potential need for adding days, just to make sure people had that on their calendar. Now that things have kind of shaken out, we'd recommend that we add those two days. Still, it's a little bit of a cushion in case, we don't want to be under it. If the auditor comes in and finds something that would reduce our funding for every single student, that'd be a bad deal, so. We'll just finish on the 19th rather than the 17th, so. The calendar is on, on your supporting documents if you needed to reference that, but...
Mr. President, I move that the board approved extending the school year by two days to March 19th.
May.
May 19th.
Sorry.
It's been moved and seconded that the board approved extending the school year by two days to May 19th. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Jobs for American graduates.
So we've been discussing this last couple of months on the potential of adding a Jobs for American Graduates program here. We feel it's, it would be a very beneficial program. With Stafford having a program, they would be able to share their staff member with us and we wouldn't have a lot of upfront investment or trying to start our own program from scratch. So the way JAG works is they hire the specialist, they pay them, they're on their payroll. They work in our building, so they charge $11,220 is the contract amount for next year for that, that service. We would split that cost with Stafford and then we would need to pay mileage to and from Stafford, similar to what we've done in the past with Mrs. Volker and Mrs. Suter when we shared teachers. One district would pay mileage to the other. So I guess this would be the formal way that we would, this board would support that. Might be some details on the schedule. I think, I think we can work that out. They're very positive about the sharing arrangement. Now, do we pay that fee to Stafford? Do we pay to JAG? We have to work all that out. There's still a chance that we could go through this process, working with the JAG people, and they say, well, this isn't going to work for whatever reason. So, but I feel pretty confident that if this is something that the board would like to do, that it will go through and I think it'll be a positive thing, so.
Yeah, any conversations with the JAG specialist at Stafford?
Not personally, no.
Okay.
So my recommendation would be to move ahead with that, approve that sharing agreement.
Mr. President? Mr. President, I move the board approve the sharing agreement with Stafford for the JAG program as presented.
Sorry. It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the sharing agreement with Stafford for the JAG program as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Capital outlay plan.
So just a quick review of our capital outlay plan and where we're at with the budget we had. We're in better shape than I thought starting, or this time last year. A little bit more revenue than I expected and then our beginning balance was, was a little higher also. So this shows what, what we've had budgeted in our plan. This column is what we've spent so far roughly and then what we expect to pay out of capital outlay on the last column, so. One thing, student Chromebooks, we've updated some Chromebooks. We may need to do some more of that. We could use Esser funds for that expense to, we have some capital outlay dollars there. That would just be a journal entry with that expense. The bus, we still got it ordered that said late May, early June. We've only got one more payment on the lease purchase, so we don't have to pay that much to pay that lease purchase off really, it's just one, one year's payment. I'm counting this shop equipment, 23,000. That's what we, we sold all that equipment. We have that revenue. I just listed that as an expense because we've kind of earmarked that for Adam to use to purchase some equipment, so I didn't want to use that as funds for something else and then not, not have that. So we haven't spent it all, but it's there.
How's the overall cost of the house been coming, like funding-wise?
Really, we haven't spent much except for this year and I didn't, I haven't gone over that in detail yet. We've got stuff in our shop and our vocational fund and some in capital outlays. Some need to consolidate that. I'll give a report on that for you next time, for sure. We did purchase some tools last year, but most of it was just demolition. We've not done any roof maintenance. There's not a lot that we have to do right away. Some things to consider for the summer. Earlier in the year, I was talking with Chris Mansell about redoing the curb on Broadway. That would be an expense of the city. And he said if they're going to do that, it'd be best to do, redo that sidewalk there. It's not in great shape. The approach up to the building is, is in worse shape than the sidewalk, actually, so it would be a good time to do that. He estimated about 27,000 to do that, so basically be that whole block along Broadway. That would be all new concrete, so that's something to consider. That wasn't approved in our plan, but something to consider.
Does the city put a timeline when they're going to?
I don't know that yet.
Okay.
Did you have to check anything on the new possible parking situation?
I hadn't. That would be, I would guess, quite a bit more, so that's the other consideration. If we would want to do that, that would require some street engineering and moving the water
I mean, you heard the first part of the question?
here. The question was about if we would make that into parking, like angled parking there along Broadway?
Oh, okay.
So that would be a lot more complicated process to do that. I do know that.
And it could have some effect on bus parking during major events? Did that 27,000, did that, I'm sorry, did that include the approach to the building too?
Yes.
It's not the sidewalk?
The sidewalk, basically that was, the sidewalk along Broadway, it's a pretty wide sidewalk and then the approach up to the, where the auditorium is. And then the curb, I think, would be separate and paid by the city, but that would need to be bid out. I don't even know how we'd do that if we bid it as our own and pay for part of that or if the city would just bid it out as one project, how would we do that? So. We do some flooring this summer. We've got a couple of rooms that need the concrete polished, so get rid of some more tile. We need to bump that up a little bit, that that could be, that'd be on next year's budget. That track was one of those, which I have not heard from them. I was hoping we'd have it done by today, but we don't. So that's kind of where we are for the current year. And I haven't put much work into this because I did want your input on some things, on what we need to take care of, like the concrete. Do we consider replacing the doors on the north, north side by the high school office? Those are in rough shape and they get a lot of use. So this would be next month. We need to have this all figured out, so we would be approving this next year's budget plan. Vehicles, I think we can get one this summer. Well, we tried to get one, I don't know. I've accelerated that based on looking at our figures, our budget figures for capital outlay. I think we can accelerate that, replace suburban this coming year and the next year. Probably with those, one of those transit vans that holds 10. And they look fantastic.
I won't see a safety rating on that first.
Well, the, the state says we cannot transport, it's against a lot of transport students and it's 12 and 15 passenger box vans or like a cargo type van because those aren't safe, but the smaller ones, like the 10 passenger, those transits are, are okay to use, so. Replacing some student technology, it could be purchased with our Esser funds. Could free up some dollars. I've included the doors in there. I don't know where we're going to be at on, on cost for those, but doing the electronic locks, it gets pretty expensive pretty quick. I think that's on the high end to replace those four doors, but locker rooms for the girls, or lockers for the girls locker room. And you can see our debt service here. We've got this coming year and then the following year to make that payment and then we'll be done with that. And that'll free up a lot of dollars. And as a contingency, using some custodial salaries, I don't know if we want to, I don't, that can't be a long-term solution with our personnel. That needs to only be a contingency if we need, need it, but. So any thoughts on the, on the concrete? You know, we run into this, this situation with a lot of things, like are the doors on the north side? We need a more secure entrance. That's a lot of money. We're going to have to put a lot of money into it. So if we're going to do that, then it wouldn't make sense to replace the doors if we're going to tear stuff up and remodel it. It wouldn't make sense for us to go ahead and re-pour the sidewalk if in a few years we want to put parking there, so. Do we move ahead with certain improvements like the doors, knowing that we may have to, or we may have wasted that money if we're going to do something different? Or do we just hold off and live with the way it is for a few years till we figure out a more permanent solution to that safety? And the parking, things like that. Heating and air, we run into that. Redo the whole thing. With our boilers, we didn't have time to wait and see, well, should we look at a different system? Well, we can't afford a different system. We need boilers now. So becomes the difficult thing about long-term plans and...
I think the safety of the front door needs to happen at some point, but I don't see no reason to put new doors on it if we're going to do that.
And it may be, that, that may be one of those things that replace the doors and you can still make the entrance safer or not have wasted money on those doors. I just don't know what that design would look like.
Your main target's the first entry set, not the second one? Or both?
I guess the, yeah, yeah, just the outside, the inside. But how we, how that entrance is designed to be where, like my office, where you have to come into the office to get in the building.
Is that something you can work with the plans of the windows and things like that where you can have that all, something can be utilized, function that together, you know, where it might save some money to?
It could be, I'm not sure if that qualifies. You know, the indoor air quality helps mitigate the spread of virus, so being able to open the windows, that's easy to connect to the coronavirus relief funds. Not as easy with the doors, but maybe.
Is that something you'd have to have an architect for on the doors too, or?
Not just to replace the doors, no. No, that can be done without an architect unless we connect, unless we try to use the Esser funds, but.
The concrete is thought it'll be more expensive later or just because he's on site there for doing the sidewalk?
And trying to make a smooth curb with that, that crummy sidewalk.
Yeah.
If they run the machine along that, have to run it along that sidewalk.
Have a little wave to it.
Yeah. And the sidewalk's not terrible, but the approach is pretty bad up to the building. So I'll work on this and may touch base. We've had Carl and Derek kind of been the go-to guys on the capital improvements plan. We've looked at our, I guess they're kind of our facilities committee. Visit with them and work on this over the next month and try to finalize at least a five-year plan. If you have any other input, feel free to let me know. It's a complicated mess.
Okay. Thank you. Student handbook.
You do have a handbook included on page 32. This is just a first look at it. If there's anything, Mr. White, did you have anything that we really needed to focus on changing a lot? If there's anything that you guys had that you thought we needed to be looking at, once the board approves it, it acts as board policy. Okay, so we'll have that on the agenda for next, next month or the following month to finalize any changes.
Education foundation.
We just had a foundation meeting tonight and we've got some things going. So right now we have about 19,000 in our checking account. We've got 1.6 million in the investments. This big spreadsheet here shows, shows the total amount, 1.63 million. This is in investments in South Central Community Foundation, so they manage the funds for us. You can see the various scholarship funds we have and library endowment. So there's, there's various funds there that were donated by different, in different situations. So library, 1.13 million, so majority of that is libraries, what, 70% of that is, is library funds. And then we have 135 that's specified for no purpose, so just used at the discretion of the foundation board. And there's a Dodger Memorial Scholarship. We started out with about 100,000 in that and we've paid out almost $33,000 in scholarships since 2017 for kids to take college classes while in high school, so that's been a huge benefit and it's still growing, so that we've been using it and it's still growing, so we'll probably use a little more of that. We've done classroom grants. Each year we do that. We had about $3,000 for classroom seating, some lades for the shop program and a drone for the video production. The foundation, we donated 20,000 to, for the greenhouse. We get the funding from memorials. We'll have, if families determine that the foundation is a good place for memorials to be donated, we get, we get quite a, quite a few. We get, we get quite a, quite a few dollars from that. We have the art auction, which is coming up on May twenty seventh to raise some funds. That generates some discussion about the foundation, gets our name out there. We started last year with a golf tournament, raised almost five thousand dollars last year with that golf tournament. We're combining with the Booster Club this year. We just thought it was too much to do two tournaments that are connected with the school. That's coming up on the twenty third of April. Farm to school program, we get donated funds to help with beef processing costs. Our producers donate an animal and we pay for the processing, but we get donations every year to help pay for that. The library roof, we've had discussions with the library board about using some, some of those funds. Just to give you an idea of that one point one three million that's in there. How that came about, I don't know all of the history, but I do know at some point around two thousand four, those endowment funds were held in CDs, I think. And then they moved it out of that into the South Central Community Foundation in investments. We started using more of those funds to help with library operations in fifteen sixteen. And between two thousand and four, when the funds were moved down there and the fifteen sixteen budget year, it had grown to nine hundred and seventy seven thousand. And since that time, we've been withdrawing funds each year. One year we withdrew extra funds for carpet. And at this point, it's up to, you know, one point one three million. So we've been using the funds. And it makes sense to use the funds for big expense like the, the roof when it's, it doesn't need to be growing wealth. That's not the, the purpose of the organization is to grow wealth. It's own and operate this library and that's, that's where the money should be used. And the library board is agreeable to that, that we'll use that, those funds to help pay for the roof. Any questions on the foundation? You guys have anything to add? Alisa or Carl and Derek serve on that board? And then we appoint a few others.
You covered it.
Thank you. Daycare update. So we've got all the paperwork done. We're the house, sent it to the title company. We had something wrong on the legal description from, from the attorney. So we need to clear that up and get a new deed signed. But that's one minor hiccup and we should have the building ready to go in our possession very soon. I did put out a request for proposals from daycare providers. Had some interest from, from people. I had somebody come tour the building the other day. So we just want to make sure that whoever we get to run that, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a good situation. We're going to get somebody that knows what they're doing and we don't have to have to change providers or anything like that. Essentially, they're going to run the business the way they want to run it. We're just going to lease them the building and lease it for a very reasonable price. And expect that at least three slots are saved for our school staff. Some of the details on how we do that, who pays for utilities, all that. We're working on a memorandum of understanding. So once we determine what, who the provider is, we'll work out the details of what do we need to have done to the building and negotiate any of the terms of, of the lease agreement. So I've got some sample lease agreements, mothers doing this and MOUs as well. So there's your timeline. We'll have some proposals in early May and then bring a recommendation to you for somebody to lease the building to.
Have you had anybody interested?
Yes, I had one person call and wanted to come look at the building and gave her a tour the other day. I've had another person that's sent in information already, even before we advertise this. So so she's going to need to go back and make sure she's got what's in here as well as what she's already sent. And then the daycare committee had, had four or five people express interest in opening a daycare in the county at least. And we're all here, but so that's where we are, are on that.
Okay, thank you. Activity fund.
Tiger Coffee Shop, they're going to have money coming in and out. We need a way to account for that. And the activity fund would be the best way to do that. That requires your approval. Also, Technology Club is something that's been added this year that they may need to do some fundraising and spend those dollars. So would you recommend adding those two accounts, Technology Club and Tiger Coffee in the activity fund?
Mr. President, I moved the board through adding an account for the Technology Club and the Tiger Coffee Shop in the student's activity fund.
It's been moved second enough. The board had a account in the activity fund for the Technology Club and the Tiger Coffee Shop. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Motion carried. Board member activities and reports. Carl. Debbie?
The library, friend of the library, Hinkle is Sunday, April twenty fourth at two o'clock. It's quarter hard. It's a lot of fun. It really, I hope some of you will come. And then I got to host Reality U last week and that was very enjoyable.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Nothing for me. Administrator, Mr. White.
All right. Been kind of busy this last month. Went to the CBL honor banquet. Central Plains hosted that this year and that banquet, the league honors the top ten percent of our students. Saint John had ten and eight of those were seniors and two of them were, were juniors. The reason for that is we don't, we just simply don't differentiate. If they all have four point O's and you have more than ten percent of your students, then we recognize them all. So that tells you that about thirty percent of that, thirty three percent of that senior class has very legitimate four point O GPAs right now. We will host that here next year somewhere. We'll have a speaker and other schools will come here. So it'll be our turn to, to host it. Coming up, we have our community service day on April twentieth. That's our early release day. And it's also been coordinated with the city this year to go along with, with the spring cleanup with the city. So I think we've got some requests to haul some stuff to the curb in the cities. Even though it's after the eighteenth, when the city said it has to be out there, we notify them that we moved it. The city will go pick it up. So they've coordinated with that. Mrs. McAllister's college comp class is the ones, they're the ones that are coordinating all that this year. They've taken that on as their senior project. So on the twentieth, you'll see us out and about. Told you earlier that the junior senior play was moved to the twenty third and twenty fourth. Like to invite you to come to that. They'll be presenting Clue. Should be a pretty funny production and kids will do a great job with it. AV Productions just Saturday went to, went to Olathe, to the Imagine Media Festival. They submitted two entries, short film and a public service announcement. They found out that both of those made the top five. So they went for the presentations. The short film, which I don't know if you have seen it on, on YouTube or Facebook, but it's a pretty tug at your heartstrings when you see it. It's called Steps. So if you haven't seen it, you should go look that up on the AV Productions site. It didn't break the top three, so it placed fourth or fifth. But the PSA that was drinking, you know, and alcohol and driving Public Service Announcement ended up placing first. And Saint John, by far the smallest school in those competitions. And like the short story, got beat out by Olathe Northwest. All three schools were Olathe schools that won that with unlimited budgets, basically. So I was pretty proud of how those kids did. It's good to see some of the kids that are in that really needed to have that success. So pretty good stuff going on there. Four girls that were here and actually we had four groups presented that youth economic Stafford County Youth Economic Challenge or Entrepreneurship Challenge. And they all did very well, but the top, the top one gets to go on to Manhattan and compete on the twenty eighth. So good stuff going there. Our band and choir regional solo and small ensembles had four one ratings, two two ratings. And they'll perform at state on April thirtieth. We, I don't know, we're, we're having a junior high dance on April thirtieth. If any of you want to volunteer to cheer up. A couple of times now I've had the junior high, usually it's girls, come to me and ask if they can do a dance. And I'm always full game for that if they can figure out all the logistics of where they're going to have it, who's going to be invited, you know, and it meets my criteria also. But they always want to hire a DJ. So I say, okay, you have to go find a DJ. And then they find out it's going to be five or seven hundred dollars to hire a DJ. So then they decide to play a playlist on their phone and work this fine. So that's a good opportunity for them to have to work through some of that organization. But I'm letting them do that on the thirtieth on the deck. So good time for them. I didn't put this on here, but tomorrow we have our first home track meet with it being a junior high meet. And next week we have the freshman sophomore meeting and the Keith Blight. Praying the weather supports that tomorrow. It's going to be ninety degrees and that ninety mile an hour wind. But anyway, we're going to get that kicked off. We also host our first golf meet tomorrow. Graduation, just a reminder, it's not at four o'clock this year. It's at one o'clock. Hope that all of you can be there. We will have an empty chair for student, for the, in the student seating. This would have been the graduating class of Wyatt Hinkle, who died in a car accident in his freshman year. So I had a meeting with the seniors the other day and asked them if there were any special requests for graduation. And one of the requests was that we have a, the missing man formation there. So that's what we're going to do. And that's pretty much all that's, all that's going to happen in that regard. But it's a good, good thing that those classmates wanted to memorialize even that way. So that's about all right now. We did have a great turnout for an awesome time with the Reality U, like Debbie said. I think our students get a ton of value from that. I just, I hope we can continue to do that year in, year out. Any questions?
On the music festival, how many schools were there? No, I'm good. Entries, I guess?
I don't. But doesn't really, doesn't matter on the music festival, you either get rated a one, a two or three. There's not a first place, second place.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean the music festival. I meant the
Oh, on the AV Productions? Well, like in the short, short film category, I think there were about twenty five entries. In fact, it's not just a Kansas thing. There were Saint Louis schools there. It become a pretty big deal. And I will, I also want to touch on that and I have to pat Mr. Knight on the back a little bit. Some of the stuff that's entered in that is very gory. Implies murder, stuff like that, that I don't feel like is, is something you want representing your school. And he's been under no uncertain terms with the kids. We will not do anything that's graphic violence in any way, shape or form. And I kudos to him for that. I'd rather have the good quality material than sacrifice if that's what it takes to win.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
We talked a little bit about those Esser funds earlier with our capital improvements. It's such a convoluted process. We have to submit a plan to the state and then their committee reviews it and then we have to tweak. Their committee has to approve it and then they take it to the state board for approval. So it takes forever to do these things. And anything has to do with facilities needs to be approved by an engineer or architect, that it. Anyway, it gets, it gets pretty difficult to spend that money. So with our Esser two money, we had fifty thousand designated for heating and air control system, which is our computer system that operates all the heating and air in the main building. And it's, it's almost obsolete. And so it does need replaced, but trying to get that done in a timely manner when we have other things we can spend money on. One is math textbooks and curricular resources. We need to refresh our elementary math resources. We've got a series we're looking at. We just did the seven twelve and this series that we're looking at matches that. So we're going to take some time to review that here in the next couple of weeks. My thought is that we could transition the use of that that we had for the heating and air controls to this. That would help our, the other side of our budget. Also, we've got pathways to reading, some training. We've got our kindergarten through second grade teachers and aides. We've got some doing this program for literacy now, but we haven't, haven't had very many trained. And we're looking at seven or eight thousand in materials and professional development for that. My thought is use some Esser funds for that. Any, any thoughts on that? Changing our Esser two plan to use that HVAC control money for these things? You guys comfortable with that? That would help our bottom line and get this money used up. And then the Esser three funds would be focused on the windows and the bigger project. Okay. Our KISA, that's our accreditation process in the state. We have that visit on April twenty ninth on Friday. We'll have that visit. PTO Carnival was on Saturday. Good time was had by all.
Alisa, you have a PTO president, do you have an update for us?
It was the biggest turnout we've had. It was a really good carnival. Are one of our biggest fundraisers that PTO does. PTO helps pay, they paid for playground, playground equipment, some Chromebooks, Chromebook covers, field trips for the classrooms. If teachers want to request an amount for say some books in their classroom or we've paid for the Music Risers quite a bit. So that's our biggest fundraiser and it did really, really well this year. And we haven't had it for since nineteen because of COVID and it got rescheduled and so we had And so we had a lot of people donate, so that helps a lot.
A lot of families here. It was a good.
It was a packed house. Got put in jail a couple of times.
I had a free get out of jail pass.
You did.
From two years ago. Works great now. That was good, Tom.
So strategic planning and board attorney, I left these on here just because I do need to report on them, but I have nothing to report new from last meeting that we had, what was that, three weeks ago? So I've done nothing on those. Legislative update, our legislature did not really do anything as far as a school budget or some of those things that, there was questionable items that they've been talking about. I'm not concerned about the Parents' Bill of Rights as it came out because it just basically says what's already in law anyway, that if a parent has, and it's in board policy, if somebody's upset about it, wants to object to curriculum materials, there's a process to do that. If you want to see what's going on in your kid's class, what the teacher's teaching, come on. We want, we want parents involved. So some of those other bills were about, we need to post every lesson plan online and I just, that's not feasible to do. I don't know, I don't even know how, how anyone would think that that would be possible without hiring one, one person, that that'd be their only job. And maybe more than that, but. The other one is the open enrollment. I don't know where this is coming from. There's zero, there's not a lot of, I just don't know where it's coming from, why, why these national groups are trying to push that we have open enrollment. We've had situations that we, we base, you know, we have 13% of our students that don't live in our district families. We do accept a lot of district students. It's not that. If we have a student that lives in another town and has a hard time getting to school, well, maybe that family should attend the school where they live and that'd be better for the kid to be in school every day than to have to get them all the way over here. So it's not just about keeping people out. It's about making the right decision for our school and our kids and, and all of the kids. So I don't know where that will come. There's been efforts to just combine all of those things into the funding bill. So then you need to vote on, are we going to have, have a school budget or, and all these other things, or are we not going to have a school budget? So I don't have a lot to report on, on that right now.
As Josh knows, I did send a note to our representative, Mr. Bearchild, and he is in support of that though. And I told him why I was not and asked if he would, at some point, come to a school board meeting to get art input or talk with teachers to find out how they felt about their bills before. He voted on them. I got a response back on the first email. I got no response on the second one.
So you don't know why he is in support of that bill, is what you're saying?
He says it will be in our best interest because we could get, we could get students here. It would help us because there are a lot of people who don't like their kids going to larger school districts. Which doesn't make any sense to me because there aren't any larger districts close by where we would have students come from. Not like if we were in Wichita and they wanted to go to one of the, you know, one of the suburbs. But he felt that financially it would help us to, to take students from other districts. It would increase our number.
My main concern is that this board has been elected to make those decisions. I don't understand why. We're trying to put more power in Topeka than.
And.
And I know the political argument is.
That I share.
The political argument is that our legislature is now going to give power to the parents. And they have that power because they vote for this board. So that's my concern about some of those things going on. It's removing local control.
A concern that I shared with Brett was having lived in Kansas City where they, where the boundaries worked, as Walt said, there were always schools that were trying to pad their athletic or their scholarship programs. And they recruited students from other districts to come there. And I didn't want to see that happen in the rural schools.
That's all I had on our report.
All right, thank you.
Ten minutes for personnel.
With you.
I and Mr. White.
Mr. White. Okay.
Mr. President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired or resigning and the performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA with Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included and that we return to open session at 8:05 in this room.
It's been moved and seconded that the board go into executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired or resigning and the performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA with Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included and that we return to open session at 8:05 in this room. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carried. Okay. All the meeting back to order. Resignations and contracts.
I have a recommendation to approve hiring of Kaylee Sewer as preschool teacher for next school year.
It's been moved and seconded to hire Kaylee Sewer as a preschool teacher next year. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carried.
And I recommend hiring Kristen Knight as assistant junior high track coach.
No move.
It's been moved and seconded to hire Kristen Knight as assistant track coach. All those in favor say aye. Post the same sign. Motion carried.
Okay. So next meeting, just a lot of continuation of what we've been doing, handbooks and capital improvements, teaching, finding, KSB dues, the schedule that's beginning, our daycare proposal.
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carried.
We need backup.